Okay, may we have a roll call, please?
And again, Patty Crowan and Josh Brainard are absent. Gary Cunningham.
Here.
Marie McFarland.
Here.
Miles Schlesinger.
Here.
And Steve Griffiths.
Here. Thank you. It is now 6:53 PM. The public hearing for file APP 2019-03 is now open. This is a quasi judicial land use hearing for an appeal of an administrative decision. The subject of this hearing is an appeal of the Planning and Community Development Director's decision approving a single-family residence for accessory use as a vacation rental dwelling in the Rhodes End neighborhood. The appellant has appealed a condition of approval limiting the VRD use to two bedrooms based on availability of onsite parking. The appellant requests approval of a four-room bedroom VRD. Four-bedroom VRD. The project site is located at 5521 Northwest Jetty Avenue in the Rhodes End residential R1 RE Zone. The appellant's property owners are Joshua and Dana Thomas. Because quasi judicial proceedings require the observance of certain procedural safeguards, the commission must take a few moments to cover some preliminary matters in required statements. Does any member of the commission wish to declare or ex parte contact, conflict of interest, or bias in this matter?
Yes.
Please state here.
I have a personal bias. I live within several blocks of this home and know the property well, and I think that I should excuse myself.
So what you're saying is you're unable to set aside your personal feelings and make this decision based only on the evidence submitted in the record as applied to the applicable law?
I...
Please speak into the microphone.
The issue for you is can you set aside your own personal feelings and make this decision based only on the applicable law and the evidence submitted in this record?
Just in the record, yes. I think I could.
Okay, so you have this bias, you're disclosing it, but you're saying that...
Based on the evidence, I think I could make a choice.
You can, and set aside your personal feelings?
Set aside my personal feelings.
Okay, so the next question on your script then, Mr. Chairman, is does any member object to the participation? And that includes, by the way, you guys, the other members. So if you don't believe that she can make the decision based upon the evidence, then you guys can recuse her. And then your other option would be just to continue this to a future hearing, so...
Does any member of the commission?
Well, you want to ask the public as well.
I will. Let's start with the commission. Any problems? No. Any member of the audience wish to challenge the qualifications of a commissioner to participate in this matter? Seeing none. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge a jurisdiction of the commission to consider this matter? Seeing none. And the following statements are required to be made at the commencement of the hearing pursuant to the city code and ORS 197.7635. Staff will now read a list of the applicable substantive criteria for this decision.
The applicable criteria is LCMC 17.80.050 vacation rental use criteria, LCMC 17.80.050 B3 parking, LCMC 17.56 off-street parking and loading regulations, LCMC 5.14 vacation dwelling license, LCMC 17.76.040 appeals.
Thank you. All testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the applicable substantive criteria just listed or such other criteria in the plan or land use regulation which the person believes applies to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to LUBA, the Land Use Board of Appeals, on that issue. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues related to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the decision-maker to respond to the issue precludes any action for damages in Circuit Court. Prior to the end of this hearing, any person who participated may request a continuance to provide additional testimony, argument, or evidence, or request that the record be left open to submit additional written testimony, argument, or evidence. Before the staff presents a report, I would like to summarize the adopted public hearing procedures. Generally, the order of proceedings will be as follows. Preliminary matters and required statements, staff report, questions of staff, appellant's presentation, those in support of the appeal, those opposed, rebuttal by the appellant, requests of continuances or to leave the record open, close of the hearing, close of the record, requests to submit written argument deliberations, and decision. The city has established some time limits. The appellant will have 15 minutes to speak. After that, any person may speak for up to three minutes. If the planning commission has questions, your time responding to any questions will not be counted in your time limit. Hearing procedures also allow the chair to limit repetitive testimony. If you wish to speak, please write your name and mailing address clearly on the sign-up list at the entrance. Please speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name only. If you also have written testimony to submit into the record, please provide a copy to the recorder. Will the staff please present its report?
Can you go up there again?
Sure.
Yeah. I'll try to summarize the various sections as much as possible. So just some background, the appellant's Dana and Joshua Thomas appealed a decision of the Planning and Community Development Director approving an accessory VRD with conditions. In particular, the appellant appeals a condition limiting the number of cars lot on the property to, to two, as per LCMC 17.8050B3. The number of bedrooms allowed to be rented was reduced to two. The property is shown in Exhibit 1 with an address of 5521 Northwest Jetty Avenue, further identifying the Lincoln County Accessors map as 061134DA, tax lot 04800. It is in the Rhodes End neighborhood. So as far as the city decision goes, on April 19th, 2019, the applicant filed an application for authorization for uses of vacation rental dwelling. The application in Exhibit 2 was deemed complete on April 22nd, 2019. The notice of application was mailed to neighbors within 250 feet of the subject dwelling on April 24th. Property was inspected for compliance with land use standards as well as health and safety and licensing standards on May 20th, 2019. The land use application was approved by the Planning Director on May 31st, 2019, see Exhibit 4. Notice of decision was mailed on June 5th, 2019. The subject residence has four bedrooms and is located on a 7,750 square foot lot, measured to the statutory vegetation line on Northwest Jetty Avenue. There are two off-street parking spaces on the property as shown in Exhibit 5. One compact, one compact in the garage and one full-size in front of the garage parked parallel to the street. The garage can accommodate one compact space due to the length inside. As shown in Exhibit 5, one side of the garage measured 13 feet 6 inches in length, with the other measuring 17 feet 19 inches, measured from the eight-inch-high concrete foundation ledge on the west side of the garage. The ledge is too high for most vehicles to overhang and therefore cannot be counted as a bump stop as per LCMC 17.56.11F. It's also worth noting, even if it was able to overhang, the distance is not enough to allow an extra vehicle. As for LCMC 17.56110I, a maximum of 50% of the spaces can be compact and the dimensions must be a minimum of eight feet by 16 feet deep. As per LCMC 17.56110K1, a full-size space must be at a minimum of nine feet wide by 20 feet deep. Due to the length of the available parking space in the garage, again, see Exhibit 5, it can only accommodate one compact space on the north end of the garage. Even if the north parking space was to measure from the wall, not the ledge, it would still not meet the minimum full-size length of 20 feet. Driveway was deemed to be able to accommodate one full-size vehicle. As measured on GIS, there is only, which is our computer mapping, there's only 13 feet from the front of the house to the property line. It also shows on the recent survey of the house, I think it was 13.2 feet from the front of the garage to the property line on Northwest Jetty. On-site, the property pins were located, a rough measurement was taken. So onsite, we did do a rough measurement. We did try to string a line, and it wasn't quite, we just couldn't quite get through all the obstacles, but it was measured not to be more than 16 feet. Please see Exhibit 5. The space in the driveway needs to be a full size as defined by LCMC 17.56110I and 17.56110K1. There's not enough space to car, park a car perpendicular to the street in front of the house without the vehicle hanging over the property boundary into the city right-of-way, violating LCMC 17.080.050B3. The only way to accommodate a full-size parking space within the property boundary is to park it parallel to the street as shown on Exhibit 5. Just to read, LCMC 17.080.050B3 reads, "Parking in any residential or commercial zone, one off-street parking space will be provided for each bedroom in the dwelling, and no less than two spaces will be provided for each dwelling unit. If the proposed VRD cannot provide the required parking and also meet the other standards of subsection B of this section, including required landscaping, the vacation rental occupancy of the dwelling shall be reduced to conform the available amount of off-street parking and made it conditions of licensing under chapter 5.14 LCMC." The Planning and Community Development Director has the discretion to require such changes necessary to conform the dwelling to available approved parking and shall inspect the dwelling as necessary to confirm occupancy has been so conformed prior to approving the use in any allowed zone. Example is changing a bedroom to another use. No more vehicles can be parked on the property than are designated off-street parking spaces. No variance from the parking standard is allowed. As per code, only two legal parking spaces were deemed to be present on the property, and as a condition of approval, two of the four bedrooms were required to be locked off as for LCMC 17.080.050B3. The front yard was measured to be 874 square feet, five of which is landscaped. Staff determined there was no clear way to add additional full-size parking spaces as required by 17.56110I without violating the landscaping requirement in 17.80.050B5. If the appellant can figure out a way to add additional parking while maintaining 50% landscape coverage in the front yard, they may apply to amend the approved land use application to allow more bedrooms to be made available. Staff explained this option to the appellant. Staff recommends that the planning commission take public testimony regarding the appeal and determine if the director's decision was reasonable and based on a preponderance of the evidence or made in error. If the commission finds that director's decision was in fact an error, it should make appropriate findings and uphold the appeal. If the commission finds that director's decision was not an area, error, it should make findings and deny the appeal.
Okay. I have one question for you. There were photos of cars parked perpendicular to the garage in the public record, so I would assume, based on what you said, that those cars, part of them at least, were extending into the public right-of-way. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah. There's a couple pictures with some vehicles in the front driveway, and if you measure 13 feet, if you measure from the front of the driveway to where the, front of the garage, where the cars are parked, to the, to the property line is only 13 feet, 13.2 feet. So in order to meet the minimum requirements while functionally, you know, they may be parked off of the travel lane that would still be hanging over into the city right-of-way. And it is typical, it's, it's not untypical for homes to have part of their driveway in the city right-of-way, but in, for the vacation rentals dwellings, you have to have that parking within your property boundary. So for vacation rentals sake, these cars would be hanging over into the right-of-way and therefore not parked solely on the property of the homeowner.
And possibly, if the homeowner wanted to, they might make renovations to the garage that would allow two cars to be parked there? Is that possible?
Um, if they could figure out a way to do that, then yeah, that could be an option. You know, we go based off of what the defined parking sizes are in the code, the compact space, eight by 16, and the other space, which is nine by 20. So in order to meet that parking, it's not whether or not you can, you can fit a vehicle in there, it's whether or not the dimensions meet the space requirement set forth in the parking and loading regulations. So you could theoretically, there, there might be something you could do to get that distance, or there could be some way you could rework the front yards, maybe get an extra vehicle. Based off the numbers that I did onsite, there didn't really seem to be an obvious way to do that, and that's why the option, if you did ever improve the garage to allow to meet those space dimensions or rework the landscaping and the parking situation in a way that did allow you to meet that 50% landscaping while meeting the size requirements in the parking and loading regulations, then that could be presented to staff and you could amend your application to add as many bedrooms up to the four that you could based on meeting that criteria, if, if it's possible.
If it's possible, right.
Yeah.
Okay. Questions from commissioners? Miles?
I was wondering what year that house was built in or when the foundation was poured, if you've got that information, because a lot of those houses have been added on to over the last six years, 70 years.
I am not, I'm not aware of the, of the specific date the house was built, but either way, we go by what's, what are the existing conditions onsite at the time. And I, I mean, I would assume that the ledge is part of the foundation, but, you know, I, I don't have the house plans in front of me.
Any other questions? Thank you, Weston. Now's the time for the appellant's presentation. You're welcome to come forward. Please identify yourself, no need to give us your address.
Hello, my name is Joshua Thomas.
And I just wanted to remind you, I think you have 15 minutes, and you can reserve part of that time for rebuttal if you feel you might need it.
Okay. So I think maybe what they did last time, 10 minutes for my presentation.
And speak directly into the microphone.
I think 10 minutes for my presentation, and then five minutes potentially for rebuttal.
Okay, thank you.
First of all, I just want to thank the committee here for, for hearing me today, and I just want to give you a little bit of background. So my family and I took a spring break vacation about five years ago, did the RV trip up to the Oregon coast. Always wanted to visit the Oregon coast and fell in love with Lincoln City when we visited five years ago. During that visit, we decided that this is where my wife and I ultimately wanted to retire, and so we were connected with Linda Roy, who's sitting behind me of Lincoln City Realty. She's become a very dear friend of ours over the last five years of we've been on this property search for our ultimate home where my wife and I will eventually retire. That said, we've put offers on a number of houses, some of them didn't work out, and we finally ended up with the one at 5521 Northwest Jetty last year. It was in very much disrepair, although the house was built in 2004, to answer your question. It's a fairly new home, but it had gone into foreclosure and had sit empty for a number of years with, so when we bought it, we, we put quite a bit of money into it, knowing that we probably couldn't get a year-round vacation rental permit, but with the hopes of getting a 30-day permit per year to help subsidize some of our costs and expenses. So that was kind of the reason why we, we bought this home and what our hopes and dreams are in the future. We love Lincoln City, and we can really see ourselves a part of this community in the future, and anyway, I just wanted to give you a little bit of that history. So I just wanted to kind of go through some of my thoughts and share with you what I've included as a part of this agenda and the pictures that I, I'm sure that you've seen, but I just kind of wanted to stress to you all that parking, although it may cross the property line a bit, does not in any way interfere with the streets or slowing up traffic of any kind. In fact, when you look at our driveway in some of these pictures that Weston submitted showing property lines and where they fall, you can see the neighbor immediately to my north side of me, who has a year-round VRD. I have no ill will whatsoever towards that neighbor, but cars frequently do park over the property line. You can see it in the aerial photo that he has submitted to you. Our driveway, however, is much longer than our neighbor's driveway, and our driveway from the garage door to this actual street measures approximately 26 feet. So what I'd like to stress is the, the maximum that you're looking for is 20, right, or 16 if it's a compact, and so in most cases, cars have a minimum of six feet between the end of a 20-foot car, which my F-150 is not 20 feet long, and it's a large car, before it gets the street. So the point is, the cars sit well off the street, and in fact, when Weston came to do the inspection, he didn't park parallel to the house, he parked perpendicular, because that's what makes sense, that's what people do, and your car, like I said, would not stick out in the street. That's what I tried to illustrate with a number of the pictures that I submitted to you, so that you could see that not only could four cars fit, but potentially five could fit without any obstruction in the way. So if you flip to, let me give you a couple references here. I have pictures before on page 25 of what it looked like when we purchased the home when it was in disarray, but on page 27, you see, that's a full-size Q7 there, and you can see facing north how far up the driveway that car sits from the street, and you can even see just past that big grass, grassy area, the neighbor's cars sticking out almost into the street. So cars in my driveway come nowhere near what other year-round VRDs are approved for. Slide 28, other direction, you can see cars there, and you can barely see the cars sticking out past the vegetation on my property. Slide 29, you can see four cars, two in the garage, two in the driveway, and that's just to illustrate that, you know, we set up quite, quite some distance, at least six, if not eight feet to 10 feet from the street. Point here is just, I'm asking for you to be reasonable in your consideration, and I think the intent of the law and these restrictions was to keep cars from obviously sitting out in the street and causing problems, and as you can see, I, I think that the, you know, our driveway accommodates, you know, reasonably with, with quite a bit of distance from the street. One of the things that Weston did mention to me when he came out was the reason that they have these rules is because at some point in time, the city may want to widen the street, and so if that decision was ever made, then the city would want to take up part of my driveway to accommodate for that. So one of my solutions I'd like to put forward to you tonight is maybe a conditional use permit or a variance until such time as the city decides to widen the street that this could be accommodated, at which time I would relinquish that if and when the city ever decided to widen the street. Something to consider. I parked five cars on page 31 in my driveway to show you just an example of what that would look like, so exceeding the requirement in terms of number of cars. I also got written statements from my neighbors surrounding me, supporting me, in fact, they lent me some of their cars to, to demonstrate how many cars they could park in my driveway. So we just love this community, love our neighbors, and we truly want to be up here full-time in 10 years' time, but in order to achieve that, we need, need to generate some income to help us with our expenses. Couple of other comments that I would make to Weston's presentation. He mentioned that the garage could not accommodate a large vehicle, only a small one in one side of the garage. I've measured that distance after I saw Weston's report. It actually measures from the wall to the garage door on the interior side, on the larger spot, 20 inches, I'm sorry, 20 feet and 2 inches. That curb is, the curb is 31 inches in depth, and so if I did remove that curb, it should be able to accommodate a full-size car at 20 feet 2 inches. On the smaller side of the garage, that curb has a depth of exactly 5 feet. If I were to take up 30 more, cut, cut it short, because there is a washer and dryer there, but if I were to reduce the size of that curb by 30 more inches, it could also accommodate a compact size at 16 feet in length. So obviously, my preference is not to start jackhammering up my garage, and I would like if the, if, if you all would consider some type of variance or provisional use until the time the city decides to widen the street, but, you know, the garage could also be an option. I would also ask that if, I'm exceeding the, the landscaping percentage right now, but another option would be to potentially create a space that could be maybe partial pavers with maybe grass growing between it as a potential spot that could count as landscape, but that could also potentially be used for parking when and if needed. Again, only 30 days a year is what I'm asking for.
Thank you. Miles, do you have a question? Are you finished with your?
I believe so, yes.
I was wondering, how much land do you have to the, the opposite side of the front door between your house and the next house that shows in the picture?
It depends on where you measure from, because that property line is kind of at an angle, but from the furthest point, it's about 15 feet from where the asphalt ends to where the property marker is, and then it, it gets smaller as you go further back in the lot.
You get a nine-foot space there, though, if you put pavers in there?
I could, yes, I could. And part of that car could be parked past the garage, which I don't think that counts as part of the landscape, because isn't it front yard, I think, that you're looking for?
Want me to clarify?
Sure.
Yeah, the, the issue was with the front yard landscaping, and that's what the tough thing is, is to make sure you have enough parking for the vacation rental while still maintaining that 50% front yard requirement, and that's measured everything, you know, at a right angle from the front of the house to the lot lines going forward.
Gary?
I, I'd like to look at, I don't know if you have in front of you your picture 29 and picture 30.
Yeah, let me pull that one second.
It's, I think it's number three and number four in your packet.
I'm looking at page 29.
29 and, yeah, 30 and...
It says four cars at the top.
Right, the four-car picture I'm looking at, it appears you have two cars in the garage at that point in time.
Correct.
So with the concrete lip that is in the garage now...
Those cars would have even more room, even though they fit now, correct.
Is this picture with the concrete lip in there?
Correct.
Okay.
So that's a Honda Civic in the small side, which is the left side, and that's a Q7 on the right side, which is the deeper stall, but in that deeper stall, I've had my F-150 with an extended cab with the garage door closed in it.
I, I'm, I'm at a loss between the demonstration of the pictures and the demonstration of the measurements, and I think I, before we close this hearing, I think we have to go look at the site, because I'm, I'm totally, I, I don't see an issue with the pictures that I see in, in the drawings, so...
Counselor, Commissioners, the standard is the dimension, not how many cars can I fit in here? So, I mean, if I took a Fiat, which is generally like 12 feet long, I could get a lot of Fiat's on this property, but that's not the standard, you know.
I understand that, and I'm looking at a picture, and maybe I'm looking at a distorted picture, and I'd like to know if that's the case. picture, and I'd like to know if that's the case, but I'm looking at a picture that I can't coincide with the data that we see on the measurements. I can't look at the two and say that I see the same thing. It's like an argument over here and an argument over here, and the arguments are not the same.
Could I ask you, could the garage doors be closed in that photo with the cars where they are as pictured?
Yes, with those cars, yes.
And in both photos, on page 29 and page 30?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, my example in 30 was to demonstrate my four cars and then to show the VRD year-round next door and where their cars hit the street versus mine. That's already approved.
Any other questions of the appellate? Saying none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any testimony in support of the appeal? Is there any testimony in opposition to the appeal? All right. I don't think we need rebuttal. And ORS Section 197.763, Paragraph 6A, states that upon request, the commission must either grant a continuance for no less than seven days or hold the record open for no less than seven days to permit any participant an opportunity to provide additional testimony, argument, or evidence. Does any person who participates or desires to request a continuance to provide additional testimony, argument, or evidence or requests that the record be left open to submit additional written testimony, argument, or evidence?
I'd like to ask at this point, if we were wanting to do a go look at the property, would we need to keep the hearing open?
Yes. So, I mean, I assume that there are dimensions from staff in the record. If what you're saying is you want to do a site visit and bring a tape measure and measure them, I suppose you could continue it and then have a special meeting where you actually went onto the site. You couldn't talk to anybody, but you can all bring your measuring tapes if you would think that'd be necessary. I think staff's got their testimony in the record about this dimensions, and I believe, wasn't there a survey submitted as well?
Yeah.
Would you like to report on that?
Yeah, I was just wondering also if when our time was to do a rebuttal of that.
You could address it now, yeah.
I can address it now. Yeah, I mean, in the survey, it does show that there's only 13 feet from the front door of the garage to the front property line, so... And when we go and do the VRD inspections and how we measure parking in any development in planning, has to do with those dimensions of the 8-by-16 as a compact and the 9-by-20 as a full-size. There's no discretion by staff to allow people with smaller vehicles to have smaller spaces. You know, those are the sizes that are set forth in the code as well. I just also wanted to mention that the house to the north of it that's being referenced is a VRD, but they are not subject to the land use standards. They had their active license in before the new ordinance took place. So while they do have cars parked there, they are not under the same land use regulations that this application was.
They were grandfathered in.
They were grandfathered in, correct. And this application as a new accessory license is required to meet all the standards of the chapter.
I guess, I'm not sure about those statements, but what I'll say is that in terms of the grandfathering issue, parking as opposed to the required number of onsite parking spaces are different things. I could show you pictures of VRD guests parked all over. Some of them parked legally in legal parking spaces on-street. See, the council removed the prohibition about guests of VRDs. Not people staying in the VRD, but you go to, let's say that you're, somebody's renting a VRD across the street and you go visit them for a couple hours, you park in an on-street parking space, that's not the required VRD parking. That's just legal parking. So some people, I mean, you could probably get photographs of people parking, and they're not the guests of the VRD. They're, they may be just someone that's visiting. It's not the people renting the VRD. So the council made a distinction a couple of years ago about what is the required onsite parking requirement to get a VRD approval? And then, you know, people that just come to visit and then go away can park in legal parking spaces. Some people don't park in legal parking spaces and they stick out into the street and then someone takes a picture. That doesn't make it legal to do that, so...
And then just one other thing I wanted to add. You know, in general, there's, staff is not against any future amendments where the applicant could show conclusively that they can meet the standards. You can do what's called a land use amendment, and you can come back and amend your application to have a three-bedroom if you can meet the standards of three parking spaces. So you always have that option to come back and to, you could hire a residential designer and they can map out exactly how much landscaping you have, how much parking, if you do need to do any modifications to the garage or to the site. You can always present that to staff in the future, and we could amend that, go through the amendment process of that application to allow the third or fourth bedroom to be opened up depending on what's brought forward. So that's just always an option going forward.
Mr. Chairman, just for clarity, is generally staff doesn't talk after the applicant? And so at this point, you should probably ask the applicant if they have any rebuttal of what staff has said.
Questions? Okay. Would you like to rebut any information that's just been presented?
Just would like to reiterate a couple of points. So in Weston's presentation, he says in his report even that if you take out the curb, there's still not enough room. I took a picture on my phone right before I came of a measuring tape going from the wall to the garage, and it shows 20 feet, 2 inches. So I want to put it on the record that if I do take that curb out or lower that curb, that there is sufficient room to park a full-size car on the north side of the garage. The same is true on the south side of the garage in the smaller stall. If I remove 30 inches of that curb, which is 5 feet in depth currently, I would get 16 feet for a compact inside.
And what about the width requirement? Same thing?
The width is fine. There's no width issues, yeah. You know, the garage is 22 feet in width across both bays. The other thing I would just like to mention again, though, too, is to say, to please consider some type of variance or, I spoke recently to a previous planning commissioner of the Lincoln City Board, and he said to, you know, bring up that as a valid workaround, given the 26 feet in depth that I have in my driveway. Weston keeps talking about the 13.5 inch, or 13 feet, 5 inches, I think it is, but truly, the driveway is 26 feet in length before you get to the street.
Thank you. All right. I think that's it. Any questions? Okay, thank you very much, yeah.
So just to be clear, no one was requesting a continuance or to leave the record open?
I'm going back to that. Does anyone want to request a continuance to provide additional testimony, argument, or evidence, or requests that the record be left open to submit additional written testimony, argument, or evidence?
I think Ann Marie had a statement she wanted to make before we get to that.
I just wanted to respond to the applicant. In this particular instance, the code does not allow any variances from the parking standards. Specifically states no variance from the parking standards is allowed.
All right. Thank you. Okay, back to the continuance. Leave the record open?
I'd like to, I still think I need a visual clarification of this because I'm looking at a picture. Are you looking at picture on...
What page are you on?
Page 29. Can you see that on your screen that I'm looking at? Because can everybody in the council, in our committee, see that? Commission see that? Does that look like there's 13 feet when there's a car parked right there? I'm at a loss of where that measurement is being made from. Can you explain it to me?
13 feet is to the property line. The, what's in between the property line and the street is, it's typical on a home to have some sort of buffer in between what the city owns the right-of-way in between all the properties. So on one side of the street, you have the oceanfront. On the other side of the street, you have the other properties. The city owns that entire portion of the property in between those two lots. What his cars are parked on are crossing over the property boundary into the city right-of-way, which is not solely on their property. So the VRD requirements do state that the parking needs to be solely on their property.
Can you come over and look at the picture on my, because I want you to be talking to me. Is that allowed?
What is allowed?
Is it, am I allowed to ask him to come look at the picture I'm looking at?
I think he has a copy of it.
Okay.
Which, what page?
Page 29.
Page 29.
What that picture is not showing is where the property line is or where the property stakes are.
The 13 feet is measured from the front of the house to the property line. So if you look at one of the other, this is a pretty good example here.
And which one is that that you're referring to, Weston?
So if I'm looking at that, then this architectural stuff is all on city property.
That's all on city property, correct. So from...
So allowing the landscape, city property?
Yeah, it's, I mean, people...
I have a question for you about that. Is that landscaping on city property part of the, measured as part of the requirement or left out of that?
No, it's not. We only count any requirements located on the property. So even if there is nice landscaping in that encroaches into the city right-of-way, that wouldn't be calculated in that front yard square footage determination, nor would it be calculated in what your landscaping is.
So that landscaping, as we see it in this photo, is disingenuous in terms of defining the property line?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other? So, back to the question. Do we want a continuance or request that the record be left open to submit additional written testimony, argument, or evidence? Seeing none.
So you would need a motion to close the hearing.
We need a motion to close the hearing and the record. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to close the public hearing, APP 2019-03, and the record.
And the public record?
Public record.
Is there a second?
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right. All right. So the matter is now returned to us for deliberations and discussion.
Actually, I believe the applicant has the right to submit final written argument unless he wants to waive it.
Oh, all right.
After the close of the record, the applicant may submit final written argument. That means that the commission would not make a decision today, but if you want to waive that, then they can go forward and deliberate.
I just, I'm not sure how this process works, but I just want to make it clear that, and I have a picture on my phone, if you want me to show it to you, that I have got a longer stall than what Weston has documented and said in his report. And if I remove the curbs, there won't be any issue, and I should get two cars in there and at least one on the driveway, if not more, based on what the photos I showed you.
Would you like to leave the record open so you could submit that testimony in writing?
I think I've already testified that, and that's part of the record, right? That it's 20 feet, 2 inches.
The only question at this point was whether or not he wants to submit final written argument, which is something that's allowed under our procedures and the state law, argument only, not evidence. So if you have further argument you'd like to make, you could submit that in writing. We will not make a decision today, and then we'll reconvene and make the decision later. If you want to waive the ability to submit written argument, then they'll bring it back to the table and deliberate and vote.
I'll waive my right to a final written argument, just as long as this committee knows that my measurements differ from what Weston has submitted. So if you're making your decisions based on what Weston has submitted, I'd like you to consider that. Come see a measure tape, you know, with me if you'd like, whatever.
Thank you. All right, so the matter is now returned to the table for deliberations and oral discussion. Any comments?
I would look at that picture, and I would, and I know I'm not probably talking on the law right now. I would look at that picture and see that landscaping out in front of it and realize that even that doesn't seem to come to the road line. And at least at this point in time, I'd go ahead and let him have his VRD license until such time as the road is deteriorating his landscaping. I just don't, I don't know. That's my vocal...
Part of the confusion here is that the city does allow landscaping in the public right-of-way, and maybe that is something that needs to be visited and revisited in the future.
But since it is there now, and there is no way that the road can be used to drive down it, where that landscaping is, it is kind of farcical to say that that's not his driveway, when in fact, it's his driveway.
Do we have a motion to uphold the appeal or deny the appeal?
I'd move that we uphold the appeal.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Kate, may we have a roll call vote, please?
McFarland?
No.
Slessinger?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes.
And Griffiths?
No. So there's a tie, that means there's, the motion failed. Is there a motion to deny the appeal?
I move that we deny the appeal.
Is there a second? May the chair second a motion? I second it. May we have a roll call vote, please, Kate?
Yes.
Cunningham?
This is a motion to deny the appeal. Nay.
Slessinger?
Yes.
Wait. Miles, sorry, Slessinger.
And denying the appeal is a...
You're not supporting him. You're supporting the city.
A no vote.
So you're voting no?
You're voting no.
I think so, yeah.
Okay. And McFarland?
Yes.
Griffiths?
Yes. The motion fails.
So we talked about this as a possibility. My recommendation is that someone make a motion to continue this hearing to your next available meeting, and at that time, an additional commissioner can review the record, and then you can bring this up for a vote and deliberations.
I make a motion that we continue this hearing, this meeting, hearing?
It's, this discussion.
Discussion?
It's deliber, you're under deliberations, so the hearing's closed, the record is closed, no additional evidence will be submitted. You would continue it to your next available meeting, which would be?
August 6th.
August 6th, and...
Okay, I will second that. May we have a roll call vote? Kate, please?
Sure. Slessinger?
Yes.
Cunningham?
No.
McFarland?
Yes.
And Griffiths?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
So we'll make...
So we'll, we'll make sure that, uh, additional, uh, I, I knew we had an even number, so there were always a chance that this would happen, so we'll have somebody else review the record and be able to vote at the next time, next time.
Thank you, and thank you for coming this evening. No, the record is closed and the public hearing is closed.
At the, what will happen is the commissioner reviews what happened here, watches the tape, and then joins in the deliberations, so that's, there won't be any additional testimony.
All right. Thank you for coming this evening. The meeting is now adjourned. Kate? We have... How many people are going to be at the, Commissioners will be at the next meeting?
Well, I think Patty is still gone. Um, as far as I know, Josh will be here.
Okay.
You know, but I can't speak for him.
And Gary, you'll be here? You won't, he won't be here at the next?
Oh, well then.
So it could be the twenty, the following one after the same.
If Gary's not here and can't call in to vote, then I would think you'd need to continue it to a meeting where at least the four of you are back, and then one additional person or, or as many additional people as we get. If Gary can call in just for purposes of, of liberating, I mean, that's something you could, you might be able to swing.
Would that be something you'd be willing to do, Gary? Or able to do?
Yeah, I'll probably, I, I gotta decide something.
Thank you.